With liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda, due to some closed sessions we had earlier, is citizen concerns. Are there any citizens here to speak on an item not already addressed on the agenda? Hearing none. I'll move approval of the agenda, item four.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items five through eleven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item five is the approval of the minutes of the January seventh meeting. Item seven is the approval of the claims.
Six.
Oh, six, thank you. Item seven for myself includes A, approval of chairman's 2020 liaison and committee assignments, and item B, approval of special purpose committees. These are ones that would otherwise sunset if not approved annually. They include the members of the policy review committee, the health and wellness committee, and the Woodbury County courthouse advisory committee for historic preservation. I'd like to note here briefly, if someone on the safety and security committee could submit one of these items to the board for action, I'd appreciate it, either Supervisor Rattig or someone on that, on that committee. The last one we have on file, I believe, is from 2018, so I'm not exactly sure on the makeup. Item eight from board administration is approval of resolution for a tax suspension for initials BW. Item nine from the public bidder is approval of resolution for notice of property sale for a parcel also known as 2115 West Seventeenth Street, setting that for Tuesday, January 28th at 4:35 PM. Item ten from human resources is approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, which is item A. Also includes B, authorization to initiate the hiring process, and C, presentation of award certificate to Don Norton. Is Don here? Well, we appreciate the, appreciate her. Item eleven from community and economic development director David Gleiser includes item A, approval to reappoint Barbara Parker to the zoning commission, and item B, approval to appoint Ashley Christensen to the board of adjustment. Any questions on these applicants or extra comments from David or questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item twelve from the Suland Coalition Against Human Trafficking. Linda Hollis is with us. For action, this is approval and presentation of proclamation for slavery and human trafficking prevention month. To start off, I'll just move this agenda item.
Second.
Second by Rattig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Please go ahead.
Well, I want to thank you for allowing me to come forward and that you are honoring the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. We need everyone in the community to join us in order to end the demand for human trafficking. We know that human trafficking takes place in every size community in the United States, and that's every state as well, and that means it's happening here. It's a hidden crime, and so it no longer takes place on the, on the fourth street or on the street corners, but it takes, seventy percent of it takes place in hotels and motels. And you know that we finally had a, a joining of the Junior League of Sioux City to work on educating the employees of the hotels and motels in our Suland area. So, we're going to work on that because they're on the front lines. But transactions now take pace, take place on, on cell phones and social media and apps on the phones, which adds to its anonymity and our inability to locate this happening. Just because we don't have arrests or prosecutions doesn't mean it's not happening here in Suland, because it's very difficult to find it. Victims don't self-identify. They, they see their trafficker as their love object, and so they won't testify against them, which it makes it very difficult to get a prosecution. So, we need the community's help in identifying the absence of normal. When you learn the signs of a traffic victim, it's going to be easier for you to recognize the absence of normal. And we want the community, when they see that, to call the Crime Stoppers number, it's 258 TIPS, and the National Human Trafficking Hotline, which is 888-373-7888. And we advise you to put it in your phones so that when you see the absence of normal, you have, have that with you and you can make that phone call. And you don't have to identify yourself if you use either of those two numbers. So, some of the signs of a person is being trafficked, especially someone under the age of eighteen, is that they're very submissive, they will not have eye contact, they usually have no money or ID on them, and they'll not speak for themselves. And this is most often the case in medical, like emergency rooms and medical settings because the trafficker wants to control what's going on there. But there are male, there's malnutrition involved, they have poor hygiene, and they may not know where they are. So, again, medical personnel, generally eighty percent of them have seen a human trafficking victim during the victim's trafficking time. So, they're really also on the front lines. The community, this is a community problem, and it's going to take a community effort to, to end the demand for human trafficking. And again, knowing the signs will help you recognize the absence of normal. And so, we don't want traffickers to continue to get away with this travesty, and it happens because good people stay silent. So, we don't have to be a hundred percent sure when we make this decision as absence of normal, because traffickers count on you being unsure of whether or not you're seeing what you think you're seeing. So, call anyway. The police will get the information from the National Human Trafficking Hotline, and they will respond to it and deal with it. So, thanks for joining us in that effort.
Thank you.
Do you have a proclamation to read for me?
Yes. First, I want to thank you, Linda, for all your work. I know you've been out and about in Suland spreading awareness. It's noticed and certainly appreciate. It's good work.
Thank you.
So, as is traditional, I will read the proclamation, which the board has signed, will sign. It states, whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with unalienable right to freedom, and added the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution making slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas this problem is found even within our community. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problems of internet sex trafficking and pornography, by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. Now, therefore, Woodbury County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 as slavery and human trafficking prevention month in Woodbury County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to become more familiar with the problem and to work towards solutions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This has been a consistent item brought up annually, and so that's when you start to really get that awareness, is when people expect, you know, people continue to see this, and even if it's, it's not you, I know it'll be someone else that'll be championing this, so.
I just wanted to mention what I put in front of you, and that's our event that we're putting on in April 25th and 27th, the Porn Epidemic Conference with Dr. Josh McDonald, our keynote speaker. Registration is open now, and we, that you'll all, let everybody know that it's available.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen from juvenile detention director Ryan Weber includes A, approval of a contract extension for 2020 with the Bureau of Indian Affairs.
I expect you all at my human trafficking golf tournament next year, though. You know, y'all got the email last year. I just need approval for the last year of the BA contract for a four. Next year will be a completely new contract. So, we just need approval for...
The downer's not the same, right?
Yeah, nothing changes, except they put more money into the account. So, next year we'll have a completely rebargaining situation, but it's the same as the last four years.
A second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Rattig. Discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is to receive the juvenile detention center monthly resident report.
Need approval for the juvenile detention liaisons to receive the monthly juvenile census report every month.
So, what's the difference between a catch and release and a resident?
Catch and release is somebody who doesn't stay 24 hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could get how many days? Because I know you had more than thirteen, twenty-three, thirty, forty-three people.
Yeah, we can add that.
Just days that they were there. Thank you.
And with that, and I know you sent this to, I believe, Rocky and myself, but revenue statement, as far as we're doing well.
Oh, we should exceed the projected revenue.
Right, right. So, that would be the same sort of format that you sent to us, if we include in the beginning of each month?
We all have access to that in Tyler right now.
What's that?
So, that's in Tyler, so everybody has access to that information.
But for the supervisors who aren't familiar with that.
I got you.
No, that's, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything stands out to you versus November, December last year?
I mean, I think things are swaying back the other direction than we're headed towards not trying to keep kids as much. I just think things are getting seriousness of crimes, especially in the area of getting a lot worse and with car thefts that we see every day on the news and those things. So, staying busy and out of county and tribal stuff's been real good, so no issues there.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Rattig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen from secondary roads, county engineer Mark Nara, includes item A, approve the contract and bond with Knife River Corporation for the D-38 HMA resurfacing project for 1,999,352.65, and that the board sign the resolution directing the county engineer to electronically sign the contract and bond.
And this is something new that the DOT is allowing as of December 17th. This is not a blanket resolution, but each resolution will be for each DOT project that's let through their system. So, it kind of helps out with not having electronic signature on file through the board. I hope streamlined it. So, the resolution is for you to approve the contract, if you would, and allow Mark to electronically sign that contract.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Rattig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Proof, item B is to approve the contract for the removal of structure L-92-3 with Holly Brown Construction.
This is the first of two bridge removals of, basically, these bridges have been closed for some time. Get them out of the public view, try to make a little safer area.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Potabom, second by Rattig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is to approve the contract for the removal of structure H-264 with Holly Brown Construction.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Rattig. Any comment, Ben?
Oh, similar bridge has been, I think it was ninety-six, it's been closing, so we will salvage some materials off of this one.
There'll be something that's still usable after twenty-three years.
Some of the bridge frames that we reuse, yes.
I'll move it.
Second.
We already had a motion, second.
We did that.
Excuse me. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. You have another sheet there?
I'll be a copy, two of the DOT information on these resolutions, and we'll see more of them as each project comes.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item fifteen, action item from supervisor Taylor, to adopt a taxpayer protection resolution in order to keep taxes low and not encumber taxpayers should a new law enforcement center be built.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, this item concerns one that's upcoming on the agenda, and that's the creation of a new law enforcement center. And as we've been reading lately in media reports, sort of directly go right to the tax impact. And so, last week, brought these items before you, and won't read the resolution and hold, but just kind of give the highlights, is to utilize revenue schedules through federal inmate payments and through ICE reimbursements. And so, that would be the first part of this resolution. The second would be the board's commitment not to obligate any new capital infrastructure projects from 2022 to 2030, over $400,000 in any year that at least seventy-five percent of those federal anticipated revenues aren't realized. The third portion of it would be once that bridge is built to year 2030, that that decade CF Industries' revenue would be the, the first means if federal inmate revenue and ICE revenue is not there. So, this would put the county beyond the infrastructure investment in the secondary roads that CF Industries' revenues will be making up until 2030. And then finally, gaming revenues in the amount of $200,000. There still remains a gap. I would remind us to continue to look at areas where we might freeze operational expenses, or even take a one percent across the board cut in any year that we have to make up those revenues that aren't realized. So, you have the resolution in front of you. The only other parts of this that I would highlight is that we understand this resolution cannot bind a future board, but that we embrace this resolution as guiding policy and would ask the electorate to hold us accountable for exercising that kind of restraint that comes with limited government. So, that's opening comments on the resolution itself.
And I think that, that is important to communicate to the taxpayers, that they do see that price upfront. But I think it's pretty easy to understand in the public that if we are going to, so to speak, rent out part of our house, we may buy a larger one than we need for our own selves. And so, we know there's a demand for that extra space. What we're seeking to provide hopefully is the supply. But if, if that's, if something drastic changes, which is what I think it would be a drastic change for that revenue source to not be there, we are committing here, I believe, to, to hold the taxpayers as harmless as possible, so. Yes, Mr. Potabom.
And I agree with all this. My only thing about it is we pass season, they really have no teeth, because it's non-binding for future boards, and we can't do that. In 2030, none of us may be here. But just so that we know that. I mean, I agree with all the reasoning behind it.
And my biggest thing is, I, I think the public looks at, and you see it either in the lead of the story or about halfway down, this is how much it's going to cost, and it's going to be fully funded by property taxes. And so, my worry is absent this and having some of these provisions that taxpayers may not support in the first place. So, that's, the hope is to lay out some of these ideas.
But figure it down the line. If some other board doesn't follow, somebody says, you guys passed that you couldn't do that. Well, yeah, but no, we didn't.
Place a road map, somebody's got somewhere else of it in the town.
There's no teeth, but it could. Sorry. Wow. Set a record, I got one laugh. Sorry.
Yes, Mr. DeWitt.
I would agree with what he said.
I'm going to go with DeWitt for a second.
This might be a better question for, for Mr. Butler, but is this with the state's new, or what they saddled us with, and the two percent maximum on raising taxes, is how could this negatively affect that? Could, could, for example, the one percent come back and theoretically bite us? Because now we need to...
The two percent basically is where it hits a second, second hearing we got to have to show whether we've gone over two percent in certain funds. So, this should not have a negative impact, because actually, if we can verify and prove and show the public that we're going higher than two percent, they allow you to go anywhere you want to go. Debt service, CIPs, and county mental health is unlimited, because those are things that are required, basically. Pay your debt, there are CIP projects to be done, and mental health is mandated by law. For our other funds, you know, some, there are some choices and there are some mandates. But the two percent really won't hurt us in this case, because if we do go above two percent, we have an extra hearing and have to show the public where we're spending this additional cost, which will be easy to do.
Does this, would that moratorium affect us on any project that might come up, or we just have no other choice than to go over $400,000?
I think that can be handled on an individual basis, because the four hundred, four hundred thousand, starting twenty-one, is aggregate on CIP projects. If there's a project comes in that has to be done, the board still can exceed the four hundred thousand. If somebody can justify to the board they need to do that. The four hundred would be our cap in the future. Current year, we're going to try to get some projects done that are needed, but the future will be limited to four hundred aggregate, not for a project.
Well, for example, I've kind of been advocating to, we need to do something with Prairie Hill, and I know that it would be over four hundred thousand.
That, I would assume, will be an exception to the policy or the resolution. Some of those are things that we have to do, pretty much. But these are, I don't want to say they're wish lists on the four hundred thousand CIPs, but these are requests from departments that could or could not be done. When we get tearing down a building like that, that'll be, I would assume, an exception for the board to look at.
And the reason I chose the four hundred thousand is right now, we're on our debt service levy, we're generating about a million. So, if we have a moratorium, but nothing is increased above four hundred thousand, we have six hundred thousand that would be available to, instead of taking on new projects, to shift that to paying off the, the new LEC. And then it'd just become a matter of, is it necessary to do this year? Is it an emergency? Is it something like a courthouse or Prairie Hills that has to be done? Or do we want to make sure that we're holding taxpayer harness? I think that, again, will be a decision of a future board, or maybe this one.
Mr. Rattig had something.
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with Jeremy's idea and intention on this. I do think that if I, as a voter on the referendum, I see this as the county doing everything in its power to hold harmless taxpayer if the revenue's not there. Now, in, in my shoes and having met with all the federal departments, I, I honestly don't see that we will actually need this resolution, because I, I fully believe that the revenue will be there. And just like Ryan's report here, we had actually more revenue than we expected, and we had more residents than we actually had Woodbury County residents in there. So, you know, it works with a small situation like juvenile detention, it's going to work on a big situation like a four hundred forty-bed jail that will meet our county's needs and be serviceable in the future. I just think this is a good faith effort to the taxpayer who pays attention to what we're doing, to not only, you know, say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, we're gonna hold the line. And if we don't, I guess you got that sheet of paper that does hold us accountable, whoever the board may be in the future.
So, with that, I'll move the resolution. Any further discussion?
I'll second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Rattig. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Passes four to one. DeWitt opposed. Item sixteen from board administration, Dennis Butler, for action is approval of resolution of concurrence to Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority's resolution calling a special county election.
This is basically the same resolution, and it's on the county side. The Sioux City Council approved yesterday, five zero. This is concurrence with what the authority set Monday as March 3rd of 2020 for a general election for the issues of bonds to construct a new jail facility.
I will move it.
I'll second the motion by Rattig. Mr. DeWitt, being on the authority, do you have any additional comments?
Sounds like Mr. Scott might be backing out due to tax season and some of his other obligations. I think a good choice would have been recommended in Dan Moore. I talked to Dan this morning. He sounded more than willing to help with that. I did have a question for Mr. Woodman earlier, too, regarding, since we are an entity, that we, would we be subject to open meetings laws? And his initial reaction is? Dang it. I think we can get a lot done, but I literally have to hit the ground running. I think it's maybe calling on Mr. Rattig, Mr. Butler, you know, on an individual basis so that we're not violating any, any Iowa codes with those kind of issues. But probably we'll be getting a set meeting time set with the other administrative duties, getting the meetings time set up for just how we're going to handle this, how we're going to move forward. So, I will be contacting Mr. Wick and Mr. Moore. Is the city going to, do you anticipate the city will need to reappoint Mr. Moore? Or how would you characterize that?
Most likely, yes.
So, that'd be another city council item, or?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but it would be similar to the initial appointment process.
It's covered in articles in Corporation where they put that in their case, or was a vacancy where they'll have to do another resolution, or whether it was, appointing Dan Moore.
Well, I'll talk to Dan about that.
Yes.
This evening or tomorrow, and probably get that ball rolling in that direction, so.
It's covered.
Will the, will the bonding attorney basically set the next few meetings, or?
I'm sure we'd be open to them as well. I...
I think tomorrow, the anticipation is right on schedule with the calendar, the county, or the attorney's setup. Tomorrow, we will file with the county auditor to certify the election to be held on March 3rd. That's last official thing, then the ball's rolling.
The language on the ballot, how is that decided?
The attorney will draw, I think he's already drawn that up, I believe.
Okay.
And will present that to the board also.
Have you been provided with that?
I have not seen that yet, no.
That would go to the authority.
Yes. Now, that comes from authority. We're, the council and the board are both in concurrence to call the election. The authority will file it. I believe we do have, I think the authority did have that in their packet, the wording.
Mr. Taylor.
Well, I don't think I, I think I've made it clear, and it's now a secret, that I would prefer a later date, the concurrence for that. So, for that reason, I believe we have a lot more work to do. At the same time, I want to commend Keith and Dennis and Rocky and some of the others who have been, and Matthew on the LEC committee as well, as far as starting the process of educating the public on the different facets. And so, with that, I just wanted to bring you some back.
If I could.
Yes.
I'd also like to thank the chair of the authority for stepping forward and being willing to do that. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron Wick.
I just anticipate that we're probably going to be doing a media blitz. We've already, and Mr. Rattig, you're already going to be on one talk show tomorrow. I've talked to one of the, the same radio station. They're wide open to letting us come in there. I believe at least one or two of the reporters are anxious to have us on there. Probably the chairman, Mr. Wick, will be going after some of the other media outlets to try and get recorded, pre-recorded interviews done. But like I say, I think we're going to have... And to Mr. Taylor's point, you know, point taken, I, I, not speaking for the authority, but I think that we have to do something sooner than later. I don't want to take a chance of something going... I don't want to take a chance of, uh, something going wrong with that LEC where obviously on borrowed time with it as it is. I, I, that's why I say I think everybody that's on this board and on the authority is as passionate about getting this thing done as humanly possible, and I think we've got some other, I think we've got a lot of allies on this, actually. Jeremy, I do. So, I, I, we're, we're just gonna do our best, so.
And you and I have talked, if, if there were a time in between, it'd probably be-
Exactly right.
-real time, but it's an idle order. Yep.
I don't know what I'm gonna do with all my free time in between now and March third, but, but, uh-
You're the, you're the treasurer now, right? I heard that reported.
Yeah, Mr. Wick, being fully retired, is the chairman. Uh, Bob Scott slash Dan Moore is gonna be the secretary. Uh, oh yeah.
I, I was just gonna make one comment of Mr. Widman saying it is subject to open meetings law. That's a good thing. The last thing I'd want to do is have people think, well, we're gonna meet behind closed doors and discuss it. And transparency, when you've got this big of an issue where you want the public's support, I want to make Darren sure if they want to come listen, they're more than welcome to come. I doubt you're gonna fill the room, but they can certainly come.
Yeah, and I've said this before, but in all my time on the board, I don't think there's been a single issue that's been discussed more and in a more bipartisan manner than this issue. And to Mr. DeWitt's point, I've, on the support, I've heard from constituents for the first time on this issue on both sides of the political aisle and support. So I think it's, you know, there's no other more fundamental role of government than public safety, and so that certainly addresses this. There's a lot of other things counties spend money on, as we've heard in the news, but this is, is something we can't get around, and we don't intend to. We don't intend to fail to plan. And, uh, fair point from Mr. Taylor on his dissension. I, I think, you know, not to speak for you, but I'm sure that once this passes, everyone on this board will be on the same page as far as informing the public and doing our best to make sure they make an educated decision, given our years of experience and our staff's experience on studying this issue and all available outcomes and alternatives and possibilities to arrive at this moment. Has this been moved and seconded?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four to one, Taylor opposed. Item seventeen for information from Supervisor Rocky DeWitt is committing to work with legitimate contractors on projects where all employees will be protected.
Uh, met with Ernie Colt recently, actually a couple times recently, and he has concerns with our, obviously some of this came up with the jail concern, potentially building a new jail, law enforcement center. Mr. Colt is, is concerned with not just contractors, but subcontractors that may be hiring folks and then just paying them cash, not withholding income taxes, state or federal, not paying workers' compensation, or, yeah, workers' comp, uh, workers' insurance, those kind of things. And I'll ask Mr. Colt to come up here and address the board with his item, but, uh, this is an issue that affects everybody, and it's been, it's been touched on. I know the city of Sioux City has taken some action on this. I think this is an opportune time to, to at least look at this and give it some credence as far as protecting not only the county, but the, but the labor force. So, Mr. Colt.
Ernie Colt, forty-five, twenty-six, Perry Way. Uh, it was kinda interesting with the proclamation to Linda earlier with the, uh, human trafficking, because, like it or not, we've got labor trafficking happening in our city too, you know, and that's, it's a, it's a bad deal out there. So, this is, this is more of a, uh, something to address an issue like that as well. So if I could, if I could just read this to y'all, have, has, has anybody had a chance to look at any of this? Okay, so, "Woodbury County needs a new jail. We know the old jail is overcrowded on a daily basis. We know renovating the jail or expanding the jail is not an option because of overall costs and lack of additional space. We are in full agreement with the necessity of a new jail. As taxpayers to the city, county, and state, we do have some concerns. We work hard for our money that is taxed, and we fully support the elected leaders of our community to use our tax dollars efficiently and wisely to get the most out of every dollar. There is an epidemic happening across the country, and it's happening here in our community as well. It's an epidemic called misclassification or tax fraud. Misclassification of workers is immoral, unscrupulous, and illegal, and it is destroying the construction workforce as we know it. When a responsible employer, a construction contractor, hires a worker, they deduct state and federal taxes from their paycheck. They deduct social security payments and pay into unemployment insurance. A responsible contractor pays workers' comp insurance on their employees. A responsible construction contractor will provide the safety training along with personal protective equipment for each employee. A responsible construction contractor will pay overtime after forty hours of work in one week and deduct taxes accordingly. A responsible construction contractor knows their employees are valuable to the success of the company and treats them as such. Now let's talk about employers or construction contractors who do not act responsibly. They hire a worker and pay them with a ten ninety-nine check or cash. This is not illegal. However, when they're given a hard hat and being told to show up at a certain time, being told to work a certain amount of hours, and being given direction from the employer, this is being misclassified and is illegal. An irresponsible construction contractor will not deduct state and federal taxes from the worker's pay, nor will they deduct any social security benefits. An irresponsible construction contractor will not pay unemployment insurance. Irresponsible contractors do not cover any worker's compensation insurance, leaving the liability of an injured worker to the individual and his family, or worse, the taxpayers. It also leaves open the possibility of lawsuits that could potentially affect all the contractors and developers associated with the project. This type of business model is illegal and unjust. It's what cheats do. This illegal business model costs the state and local economy millions of dollars. I could give out some estimated numbers, uh, six hundred million dollars a year is actually the number for the state of Iowa. The same millions of dollars needed in order to complete projects such as a new jail for Woodbury County. My vote as a citizen, and my vote as a labor leader, will be yes, knowing that legitimate, responsible, construction contractors who take care of their employees by deducting taxes from their pay, deducting social security, paying into unemployment insurance, and most importantly, covering their employees with workers' compensations, uh, insurance, will be performing the work. In addition, knowing that checks and balances will be possible for the projects, such as certified payroll language, being included into the development agreement, similar to other, uh, tax-funded projects in the area. In closing, I want to thank you all for what you do, and I appreciate your time in doing your due diligence by ensuring that our tax dollars are being wisely spent. We need a new jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much. Joshua, can you address the laws for responsible bidders? Do we have that in language, or, I know we talked about this issue a couple of years back, so as far as what's gonna guide, uh, decision-making and giving insurance to others?
Right, I think it is an issue that the board has looked at in the past and actually, I believe, packed, passed a policy or a resolution, um, that would implement a lot of these things that you're, you're talking about. So I think that you could possibly get with the, the board office as far as getting a copy of that and, and reviewing it and, and seeing to what extent that covers what you're talking about. The other thing that we do too is typically when we have a contract on something big like the jail, um, or any, any thorough written contract that we have, we have clauses in there that will require the contractor, um, you know, to abide by, um, different, basically all the different wage requirement laws, and I, I know that you may be asking for some additional steps as well, but, um, we do, through both the, the policy and our contracts, um, keep these issues in mind.
Good. So, uh, part of that, Josh, is, part of my job is to go around these job sites and talk to workers. I, I mostly talk to carpenters, uh, see how they're being paid, how they're being treated, things like that. If I was to run into, if I, if the jail goes and there's a contractor on there, or a worker that's on there, and I talk to him and he tells me that he's getting paid cash, is there some teeth in that development agreement language that you have that would give me the ability to, uh, say, hey, who, who, who you working for? I'd like to certify, uh, such and such payroll. To see that this guy is actually being paid, uh, he's actually covered by workers' comp, is there anything in there, uh, that, that really gives somebody the ability to do those checks? Because that's where it's really at. You know, she said earlier, a lot of that's hidden, a lot of that trafficking stuff is hidden, you know, and, and, and it is. A lot of these guys are working for these guys because they're getting, they're getting money. I mean, they come from all over the country. I've got them from Washington, Texas, Louisiana, Florida, I mean, I can name them. And so, a lot of times, they won't, they won't necessarily give up their, uh, labor broker. I call them brokers, a labor broker, but, you know, some, some people would call it labor trafficking.
So the, I mean, I think the, the short answer is yes, especially on something with the, you know, the workers' comp. I think that requiring proof of that is, again, something that we see, um, as a standard clause in our, in our contracts. Larry had his hand up back there too, I didn't know if you had something additional on that.
This is a problem, what he's talking about.
Please speak into the mic.
It's a problem, what he's talking about, because of the skilled labor shortage on construction sites throughout the United States. But what we do is we define employees in our specifications, working with county attorneys and so forth, and then we demand, uh, payroll checks, whether it's spot or intermittent, around, uh, uh, monthly payment applications to make sure that before the public entity disperses money, that we have certification that payrolls are being properly kept and paid. So in answer to your question, we're right with you.
Very good. Very good, thank you.
Karen.
It was, it was on as an informational item, and I guess seeing those safeguards, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes, makes me feel good, and I know I'm, I'm gonna let, you know, the people that I affiliated with know that this is a, this is a good thing moving forward, and it's nice to know that you are being frugal and making sure that the tax dollars are being spent.
You really run into it in the subcontractors?
Yeah.
Offering somebody off the street ten bucks an hour cash to come in and do a job he may not even know how to do.
Yeah. I run into it every day, you know, I've, I've got guys calling, "Hearney, is it okay if I, if I go do this?" This guy said he wanted to call me a, uh, independent contractor. And I'm like, hmm, do you have work comp on yourself? Do you have a, are you a registered contractor? You know, you have to have those things. I've got one contractor that has, they actually have independents working on the job, okay? And I've sent misclassification letters to the state, and you know how those are gonna get piled up down there at the state because they lack enforcement officers. So, uh, we do all we can do. So I have a contractor who is requiring every individual on that job, if they're, if the, if the subcontractor that the general has hired, if they have independents on the job, and, and we, and we find out, then we want to know, we want documentation from that worker that he's a registered contractor, we want documentation from that worker saying he's covered by workers' comp. The tax thing, you can ten ninety-nine that guy, and it's gonna be up to him to pay his taxes, you know, we get that. It's nice to have the contractor pull the taxes out, it's done, over with, because if I'm, some of the guys will file the taxes, some of them won't. Some of them aren't documented. Not all, I'm not, it's not, not, that's not the issue. It's the, it's the work comp, it's the, uh, being misclassified, the, you know, all the above. It's, it's really, it's really an epidemic that needs addressed in every, every corner of the United States right now, like you said. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thanks, everyone, for the discussion and the due diligence. Hearing no other comment on that, we'll move on to item eighteen for information. Uh, this is, again, a public forum for questions and discussions of the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center project, potential public referendum, which is now a set public referendum, and the duties of the intergovernmental authorities. So again, this is kind of a catch-all item to make sure anyone and everyone that has a question on this project has a voice. As before, I'd like to start with the board, move to staff, and then any citizen questions. I think I'd like to start with Mr. Raddick, I know he has a, he has some good news for us.
Well, as you know, Dennis and I have set a schedule to make it out to all the local council meetings throughout Woodbury County, and just, uh, it was a great meeting, uh, we were just in, uh, Correctionville last night, and, you know, probably ten people in the crowd, plus the board and, uh, the others involved with staff, and, uh, not a single person in the room was opposed to the project after hearing all the information. I also met with Kiwanis Club, again, not a single person in the room opposed to the project. Uh, it's pretty incredible, once the information is laid before everyone as far as how the decision-making process has gone, uh, you know, people are, are in support of it. As I've gone through the different councils so far, we've gone to Salix and then to Correctionville, I have asked, um, council members as individuals to see if they would sign a letter of support, uh, and to receive it for the record here, we do have the entire council of, uh, Correctionville signed, and a majority of Salix also, uh, signed letters of support. So I'd like to move to receive these here for the, uh, record and-
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Hearing no debate on receiving those, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
And, uh, anything you'd like to add on that? Uh, you know, basically, I start with the same formula, just tell them, you know, where we're at, what situation we have, the existing jail, uh, the cost to repair, and, um, make the, the needed repairs, uh, are extremely high, would require a referendum, doesn't gain us any new capacity. The other option, of course, do nothing and let the jail fail is not a cheap option. Uh, it'll be the most expensive option in the long run, and then basically, uh, information as to where we're looking to build, what we're looking to build, and how we're looking to pay for it through, um, you know, obviously, we gotta have the tax asking, especially the first year, but then through on that, uh, we're looking to pursue federal revenue. And now we have a taxpayers' resolution to have.
Uh, I, I just want to, uh, note real quickly that, you know, there's been some, some questions about, you know, what if it doesn't come? I just want it to be very clear that right now, we enjoy zero of what we could. So, that's what we're working with, is, you know, a complete shift in our operating ability. So before there's public comment, anyone else on the board have any, are there any staff updates? Okay, sir?
My name is Jim Hopkins. I live at forty-eight, forty-four, singing, Hills Boulevard. Last name again is Hopkins. Remember that by Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore. That's what I tell people. I have no relation. Uh, my, one of my concerns is, I have questions related to the, uh, law enforcement center. I like to suggest that citizen questions and answers somehow be written down as questions and answers, and then posted someplace on a website, or some- and answers, and then posted someplace on a website, or some of them may be published in the Sioux City Journal. Uh, I thought about sending my letter to the, letter to the editor, and I thought, well, it ain't gonna get answered there. So some of the questions I have, I don't have, you don't have to answer them today, and I can give you what I have here. But in the media, I see, in the media, I see that the court of tax increases twenty-one to thirty-six dollars for a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. Why does that have a fifteen dollar range? Why does it go from twenty-one to thirty-six? If you have an answer, fine, if you don't, you can take it under advisement.
You, you know what your house is valued at?
Yeah. Yeah, but, but why is it twenty-one to thirty-six? Why isn't it a flat twenty-five dollars?
I think the reason is because it differs year to year, as it's paid down, you'll be paying...
Is that why?
Paying less, is that...
You wanna give him that sheet? We got a, a packet...
I can answer that one for you. The first year, the reason we're doing this, the first year, we're gonna pay principal, we have to generate the money to construct the facility. The first year, we're just gonna pay principal, the second year, we're gonna pay principal and interest. The reason we're waiting for the second year is by then, we will know how much federal revenue we're gonna get. And so, those are maximum rates. The ideal situation, which we're pushing heavily, is to get the federal prisoners, and that rate will be reduced. So, any money we get in, we'll pay the taxes for that year, you know, we pay it every year.
Okay, so, as I interpret what you say, then that would imply that maybe the first year would be thirty-six?
Twenty-one.
And it would work each...
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Yeah.
And then it would go higher possibly?
Possibly, or anticipating federal revenue. But you gotta remember, we're paying prince, interest the first year, and the reason we're waiting for the principal to pay us second year, our jail will be in operation, and we'll know how we can evade the taxes and get them down.
Okay.
Even over the twenty-one, hopefully.
And, and that number is not fully known yet, until we get our interest rate.
Okay.
We're, we're assuming a three percent interest rate, that number's dramatically lower, if it's two and a half.
Okay.
So in that packet he just gave you, there's a sheet that looks like this.
Okay.
And that'll show the levy rate and impact to a hundred thousand dollar value. And this is again, without zero revenue.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, that, that is the worst-case scenario.
Okay, so, so the property tax rate will be the same throughout the county? Is that right?
Yes.
It'll be the same in Sioux City and Danbury or...
Yes, the rollbacks will be different for the different types of land, so if you have ag land, or if you have something else, it'll be affected differently?
What, what percentage, maybe you don't notice, what percentage of the total taxes that are collected annually will come from city of Sioux City residents, as compared to the rest of the county?
It ends up about eighty percent of it.
Eighty percent from Sioux City?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I wish, I think it would be beneficial to the city, to the county residents, I should say, of having questions, someplace to get questions answered in the CM, thank you.
And here's a, another sheet of just other...
Thank you.
Numbers.
Uh, did you have any other questions, sir? I said, was that it? Did you have... Okay. Mr. Goldberg, you stood up, did you wanna...
Explain.
In the microphone, in the microphone. Thank you.
When we were looking to structure the financing, we needed to assume some measure of, of minimum growth to Woodbury County, which has experienced substantial growth over the last number of years. And in fact, Dennis and I identified that your wonderful county is growing at somewhere around five percent a year, okay? So what Nate Summers of DA Davidson and we did was assumed an absolute minimum fraction of that, which was two percent a year growth. So what that means is, if you're funding a constant amount over a twenty-year term, your amount of valuation keeps going up, so your percentage of that valuation to pay that, that constant payment goes down. So, does, does that make sense? Okay. So what it means is, you're starting out at thirty-two bucks per hundred thousand. By the time you reach the end of the, of the deal, in, twenty years later, if it went full-term, and there were no extenuating or outstanding, uh, revenues, you'd be paying between twenty-one and twenty-two bucks. You with me? All right. Now, the other litmus test is this, that according to our numbers, and they're all set in stone now, uh, to give you an idea, ninety-eight to ninety-nine prisoners at sixty-eight fifty a day, which is low for the, the federal, uh, audience that we're looking at, and you break even. You meet all your obligations in terms of operations and debt service. If you lower that to fifty-eight bucks a day, then it goes up to a hundred and sixteen beds. You with me, at eighty-five percent classification slippage? That, those are relatively small numbers, given the need that has been identified. Yes, sir?
When you say break even, are you saying that the taxpayer has no obligation at that point?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's...
In other words, we start, Jeremy, I'm glad you asked me that, we always start with the amount currently appropriated by the governing body for its existing jail. And we always say, that's kinda your existing equity.
Okay, so what was your break even number?
So the break even number was, uh, nine, it was...
Ninety-eight at seventy.
It was ninety-eight to ninety-nine prisoners at sixty-eight fifty...
Okay, so per... You have two hundred and thirty-four.
Correct.
You're building a facility with...
Four, four hundred and forty-eight.
If you get to three thirty-two...
Right.
About half of what we have right now, and half of what you're building for capacity, taxpayers have no real obligation because of the federal revenue. Am I...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. If you have to lower it, in other words, you're saying, we've got a blend, Jeremy, of, uh, of federal prisoners and XYZ County and ABC County, 'cause there's counties all around you that desperately need jail beds. Okay? And you blend it until you say, okay, our average revenue is fifty-eight fifty. You with me? Because counties in Iowa pay between forty-five and fifty-five bucks a day with an average of about fifty, all right? So then you average that, and it means you need a hundred and sixteen beds filled. This is such a drop in the bucket compared to the need. Then, then you put in the site beds and the rest of it. It, it, it truly is, uh, I hate to say it, but what you guys are really doing is building in an economic engine for Woodbury County. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I ask another question?
Yes.
What is going to happen to the existing facility, jail?
Uh, it's still kind of up in the air, but, uh, I've actually been in discussions with some developers on the, uh, property. They only will do a preliminary discussion at this point, because, uh, our referendum has yet to pass. Uh, once that passes, uh, then we'll look at the construction timetable, and once we're out of that facility, uh, we can either sell it as is, or we might have to use, you know, a rise grant from the state, or some, some other mechanism to probably, uh, clear that off to be developed. Um, the individual I was talking with was maybe looking at anywhere from a ten to twenty million dollar assessed building, and that, of course, pays taxes too. So, uh, you know, downtown Sioux City is the most valuable land in our entire county, and a half a block is worth ten to twenty million dollars developed. So it is a huge benefit to the taxpayer to see that land developed.
Yeah, that is true.
And of course, uh, we act as a, a board, so whatever is decided has to be passed and approved by us as well.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Yeah. Say, just, you know, interestingly enough, I mean, given the benzene remediation and the foundation issues, it's a, it's a great location for almost anything except a county jail.
Well, it, it, it's a great location, as long as you clear the ground first. And, you know, the problem in, in the eighties is that the site was never prepared properly for what was built there. And that's part of the problem we're experiencing today, is that we can't, uh, add cells because the weight, you know, of the building it currently has makes it sink.
That was our first idea, and many led us to this moment. But thank you, sir. This is exactly what I intended with this forum, is to have these questions answered in public, and probably even get other people in the community, uh, updated on that question too. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Item nineteen is reports on committee meetings. Jeremy?
We had a, probably three-hour Rolling Hills meeting, both on policy, but mostly on budget. And so, the, the crux of the matter was setting up for capita, and the recommendation was at thirty-eight sixty-eight, uh, which I note is, is quite an increase. Four counties wanted to be at thirty-six, and four counties wanted to be at thirty-eight sixty-eight, so it was a four-point tie. They have a weighted vote, and so our vote, uh, actually caused a tiebreaker, so we ended up at thirty-six, uh, per capita, and we have a little bit of shortfall to make up from our exit from Sioux Rivers over into Rolling Hills. Couple of things that I just say are of note, there are many mandates that the legislature has put on, and so the total cost, uh, is north of six point three million dollars when you look at access centers, assertive community treatment, community-based crisis, intensive residential, sub-huge care. There's not the levy ability to, to do half of that. This is not even talking about the children's system. And so with that, uh, we're really going to have, and as all regions are, uh, hard discussions about that, which we can fund, and what will be the appropriate amount of money coming from the legislature, so that it doesn't fall back to property taxpayers. So with that, uh, we are going to have an increase of about nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand eighty-three dollars that we'll need to look at. But again, these are all mandated services, uh, there's no way around them, and we're not, uh, even needing, uh, a quarter of those mandates. So, that's gonna be the push and pull, uh, as we continue on. It was a very good discussion, and it's kind of an overview of the other questions.
We don't have to worry about the juvenile system, the state will fund that, all right?
And I will remind us that the, uh, property tax reform bill exempts mental health growth, and so, uh, the legislature wants to make sure that our levies are, are staying, uh, within two or three percent, except in this particular levy, you know, it's not the, uh, the growth inflation.
Any citizen concerns? Item twenty, once again. Hearing none. Any board concerns? Item twenty-one.
Well, at six, I'm leaving to go to the next council meeting, so we're gonna have to rock our budget.
I'll be driving them.
Oh, you're driving them?
Yeah.
Mr. DeWitt?
I had a brief meeting with, uh, the Samuels Group, Greg and Jennifer, they just walked out, I was hoping to see if they had any input, but they're construction managers, I think we will at least entertain a conversation with them further, uh, with the jail authority, just, it might be, I mean, the way it's explained to me, it might just be well worth it. Uh, so, a little more investigation on that, nothing absolutely set in stone, but they're kind of overseers, if you will, and serve a purpose. Do you have any input from the podium?
I would remind the board that unlike a lot of communities, Sioux City is blessed with several, uh, major general contractors who have contacted us and with whom we're meeting, just to explore, uh, their capacity in terms of workload, expertise, experience. It's our sense, and we could be corrected as of March fourth, but that you have the ability to maybe with the clerk of the works, to actually competitively bid this among a number of the contractors in the area, and keep as much of the labor local as possible. So we don't foresee this, and we're CM guys, customarily, but we're not suggesting that in your case, at least not at this point.
Do you anticipate a local architectural firm being involved?
What's that?
Do you anticipate a local architectural firm being involved as well, or not?
No.
Okay.
But on March fourth, I'll bet we'll see a lot of these companies calling to wanna talk to us about...
Uh, one board concern from me, let's plan on a, a two PM start date next Tuesday for budgets, unless Dennis, you think you can fit more in, since we're a little more behind now?
Um, let's shoot for two, let me show you what we have potential next week, and if we got two and a half hours, we could probably make it through.
Okay.
I may be late, Mr. Chair, 'cause I've got my treatment, I've scheduled it for two, hoping I'd be done by three.
Yeah, and I'm hearing the same case, I'm back from military in range, so I might be able to call in.
At two, I'll be getting in a rental car, so I don't know that I'll... Ooh.
You could be flying solo there. We need three.
Um, we do need three, so...
I'm still planning on being away next week.
Okay, so we have...
I'll be coming back.
You'll be away.
I'll be, I'll be coming back, I'm anticipating being able to be back by physically present by the door.
If we need to, it'll have to be at the end of the meeting, 'cause we gotta get these done at some point.
And I'll be, that's why I scheduled my treatment earlier, so I could be here, so if we have to go late, I, I'm fine with doing it after the meeting.
Mr. Taylor, does that include hitting or not hitting a deer on your way back?
My plan right now is no deer.
Okay. Any plans for you in the rental car? You won't be able to call in from, apparently, can't park on the side of the road and do budgets?
Sure my wife would love that.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll at least have our four-thirty meeting, we may have to stay late that night. Let's try for three, Dennis, and see if we have enough, uh, see if we have enough for three.
I think I have to be in Bronson at a certain time for their council meeting, two that night.
Are you the budget director of Woodbury County too? Is that something you moonlight as? Okay.
I wear a lot of hats.
Okay, well, I think...
Whatever you wanna call them.
Is that your full-time? I think that's your full-time job.
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. So we gotta get budgets done. On that note, item twenty-two, we're starting our budget hearings, uh, this is our discussion for FY twenty. Uh, this is all in the backup materials, um, no payroll on this one. Item A from the county library from Earl Basic. Dennis?
Okay, on this, we actually, their board actually sets a budget, they actually set the asking, because we set that up through population and a participating town. So in the case here, their allocation will be going up a little bit, but that's an allocation we have to do, if we don't have any choice. It's paid out of Earl Basic, it affects townships.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item B from the county attorney includes, one, jury and witness fees from general supplemental.
These are all, okay, those two jury and witness fees, those are basically set as we left them the same, raised them a little bit, 'cause there's gonna be some, a lot of murder, few murder cases come up, some high crime, where we're gonna need this money. If it isn't spent, it stays in the fund in our reserves.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Two is county attorney for forfeiture, non-tax.
Okay, number two and number three are actually, we're budgeting the balances are carried over, so it's no tax. It's money that's spent at their discretion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
I'll move three.
I'll second the motion by Raddick on county fine collections from non-tax. Hearing no discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item C from conservation includes, one, nature center, non-tax.
Same scenario on this one and the next two. We're budgeting reserves carried over, and there you are at the discretion of Conservation Department, no tax involved. and there you are at the discretion of Conservation Department, no tax involved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt to receive my motion. Uh, hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. On item two, REAP non-tax, I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by Potabom. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. On item three, Conservation Reserve non-tax, I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item D is Department of Human Services.
Okay, this is set up by the Department of Human Services. We do get reimbursed some of this money. Um, you can't really look at the bottom number because they are taking off the three-hundred-thousand, like Tyler works, and we're gonna get used to this. So, their budget went up a little bit. You can look at individual line items. They did not vary very much. One went up was contractual services. I don't know if anybody, they only have one increase, and that's in contractual service. They could explain that.
And basically, that's our copier machine. We're on a contract with that this year, and so, when we go over so many copies, we have to pay for that. And some of the contractual, um, services cost more, shredding, um, paper service. There's a bunch of different ones. I, I can go through them if you want. Let's see, we have, uh, mailhouse document devo for the shredding, electronic pager system, speedy for our courier bag and the copiers is the main cost, because this is the first time we've gone to a contract with them.
Okay.
It's just four thousand for that, and that's, hopefully, we'll cover it, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
No, I have one for Dennis with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All move to receive.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Yes.
Just, uh, can we just slow down for thirty seconds and understand parent budget compared from one budget, comparison one to parent budget? Maybe everybody else gets this on, kind of slower one on the front, but this is due with Tyler, correct?
Right. The parent budget is actually the budget's in the current year. You go to the left, it shows the year-to-date activity.
Okay.
And then, the parent would be the actual department budget for the new year coming up. And then, on the side, it'll show you the percentage increases or decreases.
So, if we go down to typing printing, a thousand dollars was last year's fiscal year, two thousand dollars is this year's proposed, and a thousand dollars.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
It's a helpful extra column. We don't have to calculate it.
Right.
Like we used to.
Yes.
Dollars and percentages.
Tyler just.
Dollars and percentages.
Yes, dollars and percentages. It was all worth it. Item E from the auditor includes one, elections. Uh, in.
Okay, the reason I include all these elections, there's actually only one that's gonna affect taxes. That's a general election, but because there's history back behind it, like the general primary will be this fiscal year, next year it won't be anything, but I printed these all in order to show you what's dropping off, what's coming on. So, if there is a special election that'll be budgeted this year, we'll have to amend our budget for that. Also, the only one next year is actually budgeted on all these, because combined the sitting school elections will be the general election, which is on page fifteen. Those basically reflect back to what it was two years ago for the general election, and that's a countywide task.
Very good. So, Pat, do we just need one motion on elections here?
You can do that.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by Radig. Hearing, yes.
So, what's the total impact in terms of?
The general?
Yeah, I mean, we have one where it's a negative seventy-five, and then one where it's plus a hundred-and-ninety-four, and in other words, negative forty-seven. Is there a total?
The reason, the reason is negative, because this year we had to budget, next year we don't.
Right, I get that, but I'm just, when you add everything cumulatively, what's the impact that we need? Kind of like everything with Rolling Hills, you know, there's the news, places were being mandated.
You can go back to, well, we don't have it on this, but the impact is we're gonna have a hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars compared to the general election or primary of seventy-five thousand. So, you have a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar increase because the general is much, much bigger than the general primary.
But you dropped off seventy, you dropped off seventy-five and forty-seven, correct? So, that's about one-twenty-two.
And the sitting schools are actually reimbursable. So, you're really comparing the general primary to the general election in two years. The rest of them are all paid back through reimbursements.
So, about a hundred-and-twenty more.
Yep, it's about a hundred-and-twenty thousand to have a general election over a primary election. But law requires, we have to do it. Then, you look back two years, last year, the total activity, a hundred, almost a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, so in two years, it's gone to about nine thousand over a two-year period. Well, more and more people are voting absentee than you have, so you got a lot of things involved
So, that's your question? On the motion to receive, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item F from emergency services includes one, animal control out of Earl Basic.
This one is the same budget as the current year.
I'll move to receive.
I'll second the motion by Radig. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item G from building services includes one, tri-view facility out of general basic.
These are budgets that does not involve payroll. We'll be bringing those the next time we have our budget hearings planned. So, item two and item five can be delayed because they, they do involve payroll. So, when we get to those, we can postpone those too the next time we have building services. But number one, tri-view is just expenses. You actually reduced that a couple hundred bucks. That's just maintaining the building out there, tri-view.
I'll move to receive that.
Second the motion by Radig. Any discussion?
We may need to shift, uh, some utilities and a couple of other things back in this item, uh, garbage disposal and so on from, uh, the region, just because it's not their practice at counties. So, I'll work with Dennis on that. Dennis, you can make a note so that I don't let that fall through the cracks.
Sounds good. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. On item two, building services facility, I'll move to postpone.
Second.
Second by Potabom. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item three, district health building on a general basic.
Has budgeted a little bit more there, because every now and then, there's a little bit more maintenance that, um, potential up there that Kenny has projected. We're rolling from thirty-five-hundred to five-thousand. And one, two years ago, we spent sixty-three-hundred. Uh, fiscal year nineteen, we spent six-hundred-and-twenty-three. So far, this year, we spent fifty-five-hundred-and-fifty. So, we recommend to leave, you know, accept that it is.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item four, Prairie Hills facility on a general basic.
Okay, that is just the general maintenance out there. Basically, Prairie Hills is shut down. He did reduce the budget from seventeen-five-seventeen down to twelve-thousand, fifty-four-hundred-dollar reduction, thirty percent.
We forecasted it to spend that much?
Uh, yes.
On?
Well, very excited through here. We can look through. So far this year, he's spent fifty-three-hundred. If we need Kenny here, we can delay this one till next week and put this back on.
Oh, you can turn around.
You can turn around, and Kenny's gonna.
Oh, I didn't know Kenny was still here. I thought he left.
Uh, those expenses are for the new Prairie Hills Training Center.
Okay.
Facility. The reduction you see, uh, or that we, or that we're asking for is basically all coming out of electrical utilities. Um, when the, when the building opened, we weren't sure what the utilities, uh, costs were going to be, and so, we, uh, you know, estimated those costs for a couple of years, but now that we, we're getting a grasp on that, we're reducing those numbers to reflect actual costs.
All move to receive.
Second.
Second by Radig. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. On item five, Tross泊 Hoyt Building, I'll move to postpone.
Second.
Second by Radig. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item six is Anthem Courthouse on a general basic.
There's a slight increase of five-hundred on that. If Kenny wants to address that.
Um, yes, the, it's a slight, uh, increase in asking just due to, um, some of the expenses that we've seen and, uh, that we may anticipate or incur.
All move to receive.
Second.
Second by Radig. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item H from the sheriff includes one, sheriff commissary non-tax.
Okay, these are the same situation here where we, I budget what their carryover rejection is gonna be. This is spent at their discretion also on the next three items.
How's that fluctuated from last year?
It's gone up on the sheriff's commissary. Uh, before, we had thirty thousand. That was just a somewhat guess. At the beginning, we had to move money in there, and now they do have about a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand sitting in that fund for the more coming in. But this at least gives them the ability. If they spend more of this, I'll have to come back for a budget amendment.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Two, prisoner room and board, non-tax.
This actually is the same situation. We did increase this about, oh, ninety thousand because of revenues flowing in. So, this is money, again, that the board moved over this fund. We keep part of the room and board, they get part of the room, room and board. So, this spent at their discretion, you know. Potentially, we could use this maybe for other things down the road. That'd be in discussion with the sheriff.
What is the part that the sheriff keeps?
I think it's sixty percent. We keep forty.
All move to receive.
Second.
Second by Radig. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item three from sheriff forfeiture, non-tax.
This has actually been reduced from twenty-five thousand to four thousand. It is non-tax, but this is what's left in the fund. So far, I haven't been, any money come in, so we just budget what's left in the fund. It's been four thousand.
No additional money coming in, you said?
Not that we know of. Unless they come across a drug bust or something like that, where they might get something back in, but we don't know that's what happens. But we did have to amend the budget, come back and spend it.
Can't budget for those things.
No.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by Radig. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Item I from juvenile detention is youth guidance services, uh, general supplemental.
I left this the same because as history shows, two years ago, we spent a hundred-and-ninety-one. In eighteen, nineteen, we spent a hundred-and-ninety-six. So far, we spent a hundred halfway through the year. So, and we're kind of discretion of the court orders and placement of children. So, I left at two-hundred.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by Radig. Hearing no discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five-zero. Anything for the good of the cause?
Can we, go ahead?
I will have the budget books ready. Our staff is working on that diligently to get it together. Thanks to Michelle, we worked this weekend to get it all together, get it the way we wanted it. It'll be fine-tuning next year, but we're just trying to get through this year. Um, it'd be much better next year, but still, what we have is a better product, I believe, than we had before. Uh, I will have a report on where our tax asking as it stands currently, where the budget's presented.
Can we include the levy on that, please?
Yes.
Across the.
Tax asking increases in the levy, increase or decreases. I said decreases, too.
And it's gonna be predicated right now on the requests and sort of a worst-case scenario, and then if you go along?
I'll have to add the jail in as a worst-case scenario without any revenues coming in.
You want to include the jail?
We're gonna have to before the end of this budget cycle.
Well, I know that, but if for the purposes of.
We can show without the jail, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't, it, it's operating budget is what we're centered on.
Right. And the CIPs and the improvement requests are not gonna be added in here. They'll be at the end of the.
Yes.
Cycle, yes.
Or are they gonna be added in the levy projection?
No. We'll do that after we've made individual budgets, and I'll go out and do that.
If you want, you can create a secondary potential.
Yes, I can show you.
Including all of those, but we're not going to be, uh, including those in each budget.
No.
We receive until the end.
CIPs would cost tax-wise and tax rate.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess everyone prepare for a late-night Tuesday, unless we can get three of us on, by three at least.
I'll hustle, but they told me a half hour on each hand, so.
Boy.
That's why I moved it to two, so I'd be able to make a four o'clock meeting.
We'll, we'll be sure and ship you some chips. All right. Nothing else for the good of the cause. We're adjourned.